All right, we're gonna get started. So it's five o'clock, we're two in the stand, we'll start with point.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since the mayor, mayor pro tempore was absent this evening, per our council rules, before we get into business, we need to elect a temporary presiding officer.
I'll make the motion to Rodney.
I'll second that. All right, we have a motion and a second. Does Deb do a roll call on that one?
Hold on, just trying to get cut up.
Okay.
Okay. Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
All right. All right, we've done the pledge of allegiance. Do we need to do the roll call vote? A roll call or are we all good?
I suppose we need to.
All right, yep, please do the roll call.
Brad?
Here.
Rodney?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
Don?
Here.
Kathy?
Here.
We need a motion then to approve the agenda in front of us.
Shall move.
Thank you, Don, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and further discussion. Deb, if you please.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don? Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Across Rich's desk, I don't have anything. He didn't leave me anything. So we'll move on to update from our city administration.
Yep, I've got a couple of updates that I'm gonna farm out. So first I'll call Joanne to share some announcements.
This is since the mayor's not here, do I get a blabber on extra long? I won't, I probably.
I won't stop here.
Okay, first thing we wanted to talk about is so our chief, Joe Mueller, has been in front of the council to talk a little bit about scooters and bikes and recreational equipment and how we're just trying to get some education out there about the rules and traffic safety. So we've come up with a new way to talk about that, and it is with the Scoosafely campaign. So this is a campaign that we kicked off in July, and it's just to encourage people to, first of all, read the rules and figure out what you're supposed to be doing. We're still seeing a lot of folks just kind of missing those basic things like stopping at the stop sign, looking both face, only riding with one rider if there's only supposed to be one rider, just the things that keep you safe, and those are the things we want you to do. So this contest invites people to ask a friend or a parent to help. Do not take a selfie of yourself being safe, or you are no longer being safe. But doing those activities on your scooter or your bike or whatever it is, submit them. Every week we get submissions, still waiting for my first submission. But when we get those submissions, we will draw for a prize every week for a free drink from scooters, and that's how we did that. And then we had someone from the community come to us and say, we'd also like to support this safe riding. Bun Didley Gifts is gonna also give a $10 gift certificate to every winner. So once we start getting submissions, we will report on who the winners are. But really, the overall gist of the campaign is to try to encourage good behaviors when you're riding around. We love to see kids out and about, but we wanna see them riding safely. And so far, not all of those things are happening. So any questions about that campaign?
Is there any age?
There is no age minimum or maximum. So Rodney, if you are making safe and good choices on your scooter, submit a photo. I'd love to see them, because the truth is, I see adults on scooters, I see adults on bikes. It's not just kids that can showcase what we are supposed to do. And one last reminder, we also don't wanna see those things in the splash pad around the pickleball courts and then some of those recreational areas, because that is where a lot of accidents can happen that are preventable. You know, accidents happen, but there's a lot of things that could be prevented, and that's what we're trying to do. So Scoop Safely kicked off last week online, and we've gotten some good feedback on it. But so far, waiting, like I said, for our first submissions, our photos and videos, stuff where we can have some prize winners. But even if all people do is read the rules, I'm satisfied with that too, moving with all the rules and stuff. That is going. The other thing is, just wanted to say a big thank you to everybody who came out and helped with Founder's Day or participated in Founder's Day. Of course, to our videographer who was there for the whole weekend of Founder's Day. She got some great footage, and some of those videos are out online already. So thank you for that. Now we wanna hear what you thought, so we can keep improving that community event for next year. So we do have just a really short survey, kind of asks things, what did you like most? What ideas do you have to improve? Just a few other questions, and you can either scan the QR code, you can find that on our social media, or if you go to our website, and if there's a shortcut to it, I'll go on to iowa.gov/Founder'sDay, and it is on that page as well. So we'll keep that open for a couple more weeks and try to get as much feedback as we can. We've had about 10 or maybe it doesn't respond to so far. I'd like to see at least 25 people give us their ideas. So if you were at Founder's Day and have thoughts to share, we'd love to hear from you. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Joanne.
Hi, I'm Matt Cole, I'll share a few projects, updates.
Thank you, Jacob. I'll start with a street project. Since my last update a couple of weeks ago, got a block of water main in, and I've started grading on the parking lot, the storage aggregate areas under the permeable paper sections. The south two banks of those are complete, they're gonna start in the middle tomorrow. Progress has been a little bit slower these last couple of weeks, just with the weather and switching over to the water mains. So if it stays dry, progress will continue in the parking lot, moving along here. And they probably have another three, four days on water main construction before they jump back into the McGregor Street intersection and get working on the storm sewer. So everything's progressing, maybe not quite at the pace that they would like, but relatively on schedule. So that's that project. Anybody have any questions for that one right now? Our traffic study, we did do our traffic counts on Call Street and 169 and State Street and 169 last week. So we'll have a follow-up meeting with Jake Lombard later this week to go over those results and see if you wanna move forward with that task to applying for the T-SIP grant application. I'm gonna get working on that one. The application is due on the 15th of August. So we'll go over the results for the traffic study and continue the task for that. And then an update on the railroad crossing on Finn Drive. Got word from the railroad that they're planning to come in middle to late August and just do Finn Drive only this year, which is a little bit of a change from what we were planning to do, all four of them at the same time. So we've gone out for RFPs for plans to do the city side of the street construction, which is the pavement removal and the pavement replacement along that Finn Drive railroad right-of-way section. So about 100 feet of pavement. The railroad will come in, they will do their crossing panels, their new ties, new rail approach panels, concrete. And then we'll paint the main line of Finn Drive concrete pavement up to the edge. There's gonna be an asphalt kind of buffer zone in there five feet wide. So if the tracks do move over time, there's some flexibility there to adjust the height of the pavement with asphalt, not concrete. If I do this down, those concrete panels, they just bust and it ends up looking like this when the tracks fail or the tracks move, and it's just hard to maintain. So the DOT recommended to put in that asphalt buffer strip so it can get milled and overlaid, you know, over the lifetime of the railroad crossing. They hope to get 20 years or so out of them before the railroad has to come in and do it again. But at that point, you'll have that five-feet asphalt that you can just take out and leave the rest of Finn Drive mainline paving alone and not do a full right-of-way-to-right-of-way approach repair like this one is. So yeah, middle to end of August is the tentative schedule. Working with the railroad is kind of eh, whenever they call, I guess you get to talk to somebody. So we'll try and stay on top of them with that and get a contractor on board to do the work when the railroad says they're ready to work. So the closure, the railroad says their work's three to five days long. And obviously, just pouring the concrete back, so expecting maybe a 10-day closure on that section of the street. We'll have a detour route set up for Finn Drive on Highway 18 from the north and on Oak Street from the south to get everybody on truck routes. So that is out for quotes right now from all the local contractors for rules and concrete.
This project was supposed to happen in 2023, but we got grant funding, so ultimately, 20% is all paid by the city. But it's been delayed by the railroad, so we're hoping, as Matt said, we're hoping to do all four this year. If we can get Finn Drive done, we'll come back with wind, and then the other three will be slated for 2026. It's really been the railroad and how they allocate their resources and when they can. And there will be work in town with those other, other four are certainly in need of work. So those aren't just not gonna happen, they're just unfortunately delayed again due to the railroad schedule.
Yep.
I think those grant agreements were signed by the city back in 2023 as well.
Yeah, the Finn Drive one was extended, actually, because the length of time expired. So this one is still active and in DOT's hands as fundable for the 60-20-20. So DOT pays for 60%, the railroad pays 20%, the city pays for 20% of the construction cost of the replacement of the crossing.
Are we good on the other locations?
The railroad has had the agreements since July of 2024, and they haven't signed them yet, so.
We're talking with the DOT, we're still in the funding queue for that, it's just a matter of getting the signed contracts and sticking it back from the railroad.
Yep, it's entirely, those street crossings are entirely in the railroad's hands, and correspondence has gone quiet. So I've been talking to some local CDKC members for this work, because they're gonna be, the guy I've been talking to is out of Brit, so their local crew is gonna be helping work on the project once it gets rolling.
Fortunately, this isn't, I guess, unique to outgoing in terms of railroad powers that be, things can be delayed, and it's just gonna have to work as well with it.
Yep. That's all I have for updates. Got any questions? Thank you.
Bo's got some. Can I bring up the fair quick?
Yes.
Or is that a right fight, just quick talk about that? So the fair is next week, and obviously, they do that parade every year. Well, that road is under construction, and the overflow of that parking lot was always the overflow. This year, I don't know if they ever reached out to you guys even about just working to, the fair parade would just start a block back, or we'd all line up. They'd line up on Nebraska between Dodge and Moore Street. So right in front of the Carnegie lawn. That would be, and then what I was hoping, because that parking lot isn't as, the parking lot there above is not as large, for the overflow going back another block for the overflow on that. If that, is, do you guys see a problem with that at five, it'd be from five to six on Tuesday night?
You said the back a block, which.
Go back a block, so it'd be, we'd, I'd shut down from Dodge to Harlan, then two blocks for that, it'd be one hour. And then the parade would start, it'd just go north on Dodge instead of north on Forington like it has in the past.
Yeah, I think that would just have to make it work.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, I didn't know if the fair ever had reached out about that.
We had talked to him briefly, and we had told him to coordinate.
And they called me, but I, normally, they set that up. I don't do this part, but I'm like, I'm not seeing anything. I just wanna make sure it's been told and it's aware that that is the, this year, just to move everything back a block and a half. So the rest of the route will all be the exact same. So I just wanna make that work.
And then just a couple other announcements on some draft updates that we have. We have a part-time library clerk position that has posted. And then we, as we discussed at recent council meeting, we've got two patrol officer, police department jobs posted that we're accepting certified and non-certified advocates for at the moment. So the closing date of the first review of those applications is July 25th for the non-certified, so.
All right, that's all. All right, council, have anything? This would be the opportunity for the citizens, opportunity to address the council on something that's not on the agenda. Do we have anybody? Seems like we do. Come on up, John. Please say, state who you are.
Jonathan Gordonberg, 10 College Street, yes. Which I'm, you know, right. I was wondering if I could get on a future board meeting agenda. I have a property, 2120 East Oak, that would be the desk of your board, I think, that the city has kind of changed some things around on lot lines and stuff like that. I don't think that I have, I think it will take more than three minutes, which I think right now would only, I only have three minutes to talk about that. I think that would far extend my three-minute period. So I was just trying to sit there and see if I could get on a future agenda with y'all, so I haven't enough time to address that.
Do you have something you just need to line up, sitting home, for an agenda, or how's that?
So I guess just a little bit of quick context of, it's a, once we had that survey done on the apartment of Oak Street, there's two different properties that have structures that approach Sydney properties, so we could play with non-conforming structures. So, you know, definitely something like this, you know, two council members want to be on the agenda, put it on, you know, a future agenda, you know, the next meeting, we can touch base and make sure we're clear scheduled to be here.
And that's fine, I was just, I'm just trying to just get the ball rolling on my end for y'all, so. And I don't know if y'all have anything else coming up future that y'all are still, which, which meeting would be better for y'all? For me to come forward makes me no difference. Y'all, y'all just tell me, I just need to.
So come to here first, not planning on going there anywhere else, they would come here.
Yeah, yes, we wanted to do the next meeting, it would be the August 4th, it would be 18, so if you want, come here on the 4th.
Are you busy with the schedule, are you okay?
That's fine, y'all just, I mean, yes, I mean, just let me know. Or if the fourth one would be wonderful, that'd be great.
Need to do anything else formally, should we put on the agenda?
No, we can go ahead and have it, we'll plan on being on the 4th review. I guess there's, you know, if you wanna reach out, I guess if there's any specific action or if it's specifically considered regarding.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, I know we've talked a little bit, but we'll at least get it in front of the board members and stuff like that, see what, I mean, what, what other options and stuff like that. So I just didn't think three minutes, that was gonna be cutting close. And at least we actually have some back and forth that I, I think that would be easier to do, because I don't think that was an option that you, that, that the three minutes here, there's, they can't do.
Yeah, there's not an action, there's no type of action.
Correct, correct, yes, yes, no.
We'll plan on having a spot before you're on the 4th.
Awesome, thank y'all for, thank you, sorry. Thank you.
See y'all in a minute.
Yep.
All right, any other suggestions here to speak now with Joe Mueller? Seeing done then, we'll move on to consent items, you should receive that in your package. Just now that is to approve the city council meetings of July 7th, approve the appropriate resolution, approve department reports, and approve the minutes of various boards and commissions. Who can approve? Second. Thanks, Brad, and we have a motion and a second and further discussion. Hearing that, yep?
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
All right, that's a time to approve. We'll move then into new business. We've got a city ordinance, section 17.04, 160, regarding permitting of accessory dwelling units.
This ordinance amendment is in reaction to recent state law change regarding accessory dwelling units. Under new state law, that accessory dwelling units have to be allowed on single-family zone lots with these certain criteria. So this one repeals our current ordinance that addresses ADUs and places them, I'll ask with the state's language to comply with that. ADU is an accessory dwelling unit, and it's a subordinate or secondary, you know, living unit. Under the ordinance, the ADU can add to 1,000 square feet, or 50% of the principal single-family residents have to provide at least one off-street parking, be connected to all public utilities, and then the permitting and approval for those is followed the same as we do for our regular single-family homes in terms of that, so.
Paul, can we wait both the second and the third reading?
Heatherby, two separate motions.
Okay.
So, yes, Heatherby, we can do it, we have five people, so we can do the third, because we have a, we have five.
But can we do it just once? Can I make a motion to wait the second and the third reading?
No, let's just, no, let's do it. Let's, let's.
Okay, I'll make a motion to wait the second reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second to wait the second reading. Yep.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes.
Motion to approve the second reading. Thanks, Brad.
Second.
Second, thank you. Kathy. All right.
Well, there's a paper on that.
Yeah, I just said, yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Our motion to wait the third reading. Thanks, Brad.
Second.
Brad to approve that. I need to, nevermind, I got it, I did it.
Second.
All right, Jessica. So Brad and Jessica. All right, a roll call then?
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Motion to approve the third reading. Thanks, Brad.
Second.
So it's going to be a motion and a second. Then we do roll call.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
All right, we need a motion then to adopt. Motion to adopt?
Second.
Brad and Jessica? Roll call, please.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don? Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
All right, thank you for all that. And we're moving then to agenda item number 11. Ordinance pending regarding order of adjustments authority to grant variances for practical difficulties.
This too is in response to a law change that would affect July 1st. So under the new state code, which we're adopting to reflect, grants a board of adjustment additional authority to grant variances on numerical provisions of zoning ordinances such as lot size setbacks, yard width, building heights, and other law requirements provided that the, there's a practical difficulty faced by that is unique to the property, it was not self-created, and does not significantly alter the character of the neighborhood. So more or less, we're in additional discretion to the board of adjustment, we would consider the variances.
Any questions on that? You think we can wait for the second and the third reading?
No.
Although the process will be the same, you know, you did the process well one minute ago. We should make, I would make a motion to wait the second reading. Thanks, Brad.
Second.
Thanks, Jessica. Deb, will you do a roll call?
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Motion to approve the second reading. Thanks, Brad.
Second.
Thanks, Jessica, we have a motion and a second. Oh, was that due that night? Sorry, it came from that, but now let's see what we're gonna use sometime. All right.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I lost track. Motion to wait the third reading. Motion to wait the third reading.
Second.
All right, Kathy, Deb, will you please do your roll call?
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Motion to approve the third reading. Thanks.
Second.
That was Jessica, right?
Yeah, it was.
Don't fool me like that over here. All right, we have a motion and a second, Deb, will you do a roll call?
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Motion to adopt. Thanks, Brad.
Second.
Thanks, Kathy, we have a motion and a second. Deb, will you do a roll call?
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
All right, I think we got through both of them.
Yes, you did.
Thank you very much, everybody, on that one. We'll move on, looks like a resolution to approve a small business agreement, or our repayment of an emergency small business, all right, fellow.
Kelsey Thompson, doing business as K.T. Bloom, has repaid the 2020 emergency RLF. So this resolution simply acknowledges that and then releases an invoice, a security agreement used to secure.
Do you have a motion to approve the resolution? Shall move. Next, Don, we have a second.
Second.
Thanks, Brad, we have a motion and a second and further discussion. Hearing that, Deb, roll call please?
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes.
Thank you again, Kelsey, for the repayment, and good luck with the future. Next, we have a resolution approving small business RLF loan with Lululemon Sprouts.
This is a, for a $20,000 loan for a five-year term of 2.5% interest rate as part of financing for work repairs at 121 Dodge Street, site Lululemon Sprouts daycare. So this review and recommendation for approval by the RLF committee. The loan will be secured via a second mortgage on the property and a personal guarantee.
Moving to approve. Thanks, Brad, we have a second.
Second.
Thanks, Don, we have a motion and a second and discussion. Hearing that, Deb, roll call?
Rodney?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to number 14, approve a pay application for the waste water treatment improvement project.
This is a pay application number 14, in the amount of $1,82,708.07 and seven cents for work materials used in the month of June. Engineer has reviewed and recommended.
Move to approve pay application.
Second.
Thanks, Don. Brad, second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, Deb, roll call?
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
All right, thanks for everyone. Moving on to 15th, we have a pay application, looks like two answering for libraries exterior improvements.
Yes, pay applications two and three combined equal $36,168.22. This is for working materials used in the months of May and June, including general site work, masonry, waterproofing, related work. I don't think there's, last week here at construction, I mean, this week was gonna be a little bit slow with work out at the library, but if you drive by, you're seeing it's kind of that tote. That's all, that's not the final product, that is the waterproofing. So that'll get covered by the thin brick and the siding. We've got a couple of questions on that, if that's what it is, and that's just, just the waterproofing.
Good to hear. Might be a question.
Plenty of work to do in that.
All right, we need a motion then to approve the two or three pay applications.
Hey, Paul, is it okay if we approve both at once?
Oh, there he goes.